Public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Public comment on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings and may be limited to three minutes' time. Would anyone like to speak of an issue that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we have a new public hearing, 6 Bel Air Drive. The owner is John Verselli. He's requesting a special permit under Section 195-9B conformity for up to a 20% reduction in the side setback from 25 feet to 20 feet, construct a detached 24-by-24 garage, and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB District. Is there someone here tonight to speak? If I get your name and address, sir?
My name is John Verselli, 6 Bel Air Drive. So I'm the owner of the house.
Thank you. And maybe you give us an idea of what you have planned, John?
Yeah, I just retired, so I'd like to have a garage built at 24 by 24. The house across the street from me pretty much has the same setup I would like with the three-foot overlap, but their garage is a little bit closer to the house. And when I used to take care of the driveway for the couple during the wintertime, I noticed that a lot of snow would accumulate in that little...
Little alcove?
Alcove, yeah. And that's where, you know, you would take your garbage cans through and stuff like that.
It would get stuck in there, huh?
Yeah, so I kind of want to avoid that. So, yeah, on here it says 25 feet to 20 feet, but it actually, according to the drawing, it's 22.2 feet, if that makes a difference. But, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Hopefully it is.
Does anyone have any questions at this time? No, Mr. Verselli? I'm just going to go through the letters and read those publicly. "Mr. Verselli, this notice informs you that proposed addition lacks a side yard requirement of 25 feet. You can apply for a 20% reduction special permit from the Board of Appeals for side yard relief. Please appeal to the community development within 30 days of the date of this letter to be before the Board of Appeals." Thank you. Jose Niguan, Building Commissioner. I have a letter from Anthony Rapucci, Town Engineer, for 6 Bel Air Drive. "Dear members, this office has reviewed the project application plans, documents submitted to the DPW on July 2, 2025, for the following public hearing notice on July 10, 2025. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. Record sewer does not show any conflict with the proposed structure. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. Streets should be swept and cleaned from the construction dust. Considerations should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent to infiltrate roof runoff. This is not a requirement for approval." I have a letter from Fire Prevention with no concerns. I have a letter from the Board of Health with no concerns. I have a letter from the Police with no concerns. And that is the extent of the letters this evening. I'm going to open this up to public comment. If anyone would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application, now is the Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion...
Can we make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a second by Peter. All in favor?
Sure.
All right. I think we can take this up right now. The plot plan was pretty clear. The eight feet, which would get him compliant, is sensible to me, and the special permit doesn't seem to cause any other problems.
Nope, not a bit. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit under Section 195-9B for our 6 Bel Air Drive.
Second? Second by Stephen. All in favor? All right, unanimous?
Good luck with it.
Thank you. Take care. Quick and fast.
Yeah, that was good.
So Mission Road, we're going to do the struggle with that. Yeah. I think we're going to bounce ahead and skip over Mission Road, 29 Mission Road, and here 167 North Road. The owner is Sarfrans Ahmad, who is requesting a special permit under Section 195-5 Use Regulations A4 in accordance with Section 195-13 Conversion of a Dwelling Unit. To convert a single-family dwelling existing prior to 1938 into a two-family dwelling and other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB District. Is someone here to speak for Mr. Ahmad? Evening. If they could, your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Sarfrans Ahmad. I live at 26 Arbiter's Ave., Chelmsford. This is 1832 home, built in 1832, and there are two driveways on each side, one on the side road and one on the north road. There are two entrances and egresses of this home, and there are two stairs. So there was a modification of existing home at some point, and we were looking to just convert it to two-family, left and right, side by side. There is no change in the corrector of the home. We don't think we could require any separate driveway additions or new doors. Existing doors and entrances and egresses will satisfy, I think, most of the requirements as in the plan given to you guys. And most of the changes are in interior. We just need to add a kitchen because on the left side, there's no kitchen, and possibly half bath upstairs. There's already one bath downstairs. The right side already has two baths, kitchen, and stairs going up, and there's a second stair on the left side. Yeah, so it's basically, there are two doors separating both areas. Of course, we need to strengthen the wall for fire protection and all those requirements, smoke alarms and all that. So this, what you are looking at the screen, this is front of the home. If you look at the side of the home, if you maybe street view, you can see there's another driveway, yeah, in the Davis Road. So that driveway is existing, that actually entrance, common entrance for other side of the home.
Okay. Anyone have any questions of the applicant? Just to refresh everyone that has maybe not familiar with this, 195-13 Conversion of Dwelling Units. The alteration of a single-family dwelling existing at the time of adoption of this chapter in 1938 for occupancy by not more than two families is permitted in accordance with Article III of this chapter, provided that the lot contains not less than 15,000 square feet, which I think we have 25,700.
Right.
The exterior of the design has not changed from the character of a single-family dwelling and provided further that at least 600 square feet of living space shall be provided for each resulting dwelling unit.
Right. So existing home...
Those have been met.
Yeah, existing home is 2,900, close to 2,900 square feet, the finish area, and each...
Will it be approximately split in half?
Not exactly half, probably like, one side would be close to 1,400 something, another is slightly more, you know?
Yep. As long as we both get 600.
Yes, definitely more than 600.
That's something the building inspector will make sure of when you apply for the permits, for the plans. Are there any further questions?
I have a question. Could he make this an ADU instead, Jose? Would that be easier?
Good evening, members of the board. Charlie, I believe he could, provided that he meet the conditions of the ADA requirements, which is, you know, less than 50% of the premises and meet all the other requirements with the building code.
I want to address, so we did look into this matter with the design professionals, the architect. There are a number of variances we need if we go that route, and a lot of changes in the existing structure because we have to have 900 square feet, number one, and meeting the 50% is difficult. We need to move the walls, and there will be a lot of money involved in there and construction changes to meet the needs. So we did look into whether the existing left side of the home falls like close to 900, it's way above 900. So that's a problem.
Okay, that makes sense.
But he's certainly within his rights to apply this zoning. It's still active.
Of course.
So that really doesn't create any issue that the...
This is the best use we can figure out, best use of the property in terms of like minimal cost.
Good enough. I'm all set.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm going to go ahead and read the letters. This is from the Building Commissioner, Dear Waccos, this letter serves as denial of your proposed conversion of a single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling in the RB District. This conversion requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals. Please make an application appeal to the Community Development Department within 30 days of this notice. Thank you. Respectfully, Jose Niguan, Building Commissioner. I also have a letter from the DPW, thank you, with the following results of the review. No increase in the Town of Chelmsford sewer infrastructure shall be more than 500 gallons per day. That would appear to be met.
Yes.
The applicant should analyze the sewage flow using a Title V proposed conditions to determine the required sewer allocation. This should be submitted to the DPW for approval for existing sewer connections. If there is a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit the necessary floor plans, seating plans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations. The sewer connection must comply with the Town of Chelmsford rules and regulations. Permits must be applied for by a licensed contractor. Plans yet showing proposed sewer connections shall be submitted to the DPW. Engineering for approval, Town of Chelmsford sewer restrictions apply. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The streets should be swept and cleaned from construction dust. Considerations should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent to infiltrate roof runoff. This is not a requirement for approval. And I don't think any of that applies to you, but it's the letter they sent, so I'm just reading it.
Yeah, these are general guidelines, yes, I understand. We're not adding anything on the exterior of the house, so existing sewer will connect to it, will make the sewer common, and most likely common water as well.
This is from Josh Abbott, the Fire Prevention Office. Regarding the special permit request for 167 North Road, this office has the following findings. The proposed change from a single-family to a two-family dwelling must comply with the current code 780 CMR requirements of smoke, carbon monoxide, and heat detectors, including their types, locations, and power sources. The applicant is advised to submit plans to the Fire Prevention Office for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. This office would approve the plans subject to these conditions, and I respectfully request that the board incorporate this letter into its approval process and the public record. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Chelmsford Fire Prevention Office.
So the plans were updated with the smoke location, smoke detector and heat detector locations as well. The plan, the draft plan is submitted. Actually, the plans, before the meeting, I updated with stamped plan as well, so that's part of those attachments.
Yep, no, that's fine. We're, you know, the building inspector is going to review all things before the permit are issued.
Okay.
So we're just recapping, basically.
Understood.
This letter is regarding the proposed project at 167 North Road. The proposed project is to convert a single-family dwelling existing prior to 1938 into a two-family dwelling. If this project cannot connect to the town sewer system, it would then require an onsite septic system, which must meet the Title V regulations pursuant to 310 CMR 15 septic systems along with the Health Department's application and inspection process. Asbestos abatement and pest management must be completed before a building permit can be issued for this proposed project. Donnie Greenwood, Health Director, Chelmsford Board of Health. Couple changes there. I also have a letter from the Police citing no concerns. And that is the extent of my letters. Any further questions from the board? I'm going to turn this over to the audience. If someone would like to comment on this application, in favor or against, now would be the time. Seeing none?
I can't believe it.
Ask for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
Motion by Peter, seconded by Stephen. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't really see any big problems with it.
It's all within its structure, so...
Yeah, it's really by right. It's just a process of getting the permit. It's very much like a motion, Peter.
There's a motion, Pete? Go ahead, Pete.
I'll... Go ahead. Nope, you're on.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit under Section 195-5 Use Regulations A4 in accordance with Section 195-13 Conversion of Dwelling Units to convert the dwelling at 167 North Road, taking all the letters into consideration.
Second? Second by Charlie. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous? Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Easy.
Very straightforward.
So I'm going to step back and go to 29 Mission Road. Robert Theryan is requesting a special permit and/or variance under Section 195-8 nonconformity to exceed the percentage lot coverage and the floor area ratio, FAR, and Section 195-9 conformity, 20% reduction to reduce the side setback to construct and attach 23-by-26 garage and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB District. Is someone here to speak tonight for Mr. Theryan? For Mr. Theryan?
Hi, my name is Bob Theryan, 29 Mission Road. It's been quite a ride. My wife and I have owned a house for 30 years, but it's been in our family for six years. It's where she grew up. I think all you got a copy of the letter I put together to... Do you all have that?
Yep.
Explains the background, and I'm sorry, I don't want to go over that again. But at some point, we decided this is the house we're going to retire on. You know, we've done a lot, vinyl siding and insulation, generator, new roof, put on many splits. We've done a lot to get this ready. The thing we couldn't foresee is the turn on my health. And, you know, I've got some serious issues. I just can't be out there shoveling snow. When I looked into it and I found out that the garage would meet the side setback and the front setback, we got pretty excited. We spent money on having a big oak tree taken down that would have been on the way of the driveway. We hired engineers to survey the land. We had Mark to come in and draw the plans for the garage. Because my sprinkler system, the harder sprinkler system would be in the way underneath the garage, the sprinkler system's been ripped out. So all told, right now, we're into this for about $10,000. That's when I found out that there's some coverage issues here that I wasn't, had no idea would run into. I hope for 4%, our plans won't be deviated. I mean, I don't know what else we can do if this isn't passed. You know, we just, I've put a lot of thought into the design, the garage. I had a neighbor that had some concerns about how it's going to look. I have the blueprints up here if anybody wants to see it, and I can explain. We've really put a lot into it, and it's really going to add a lot of value, not just to our house. It's going to be very pleasing to the neighborhood, and I think it'll bring values in general up, the houses around me. I think that's about all I have to say. I hope we can, you know, allow us to do this. 4%, it's like, keeps me up nights. But that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, may I clarify something for the board?
Absolutely.
When I typed up the legal notice for the newspaper and for the abutters, I accidentally put in there the 20% reduction of side setback was required. I thought that that, because I was looking at the wrong historic setbacks, and it's in fact 10 feet for this gentleman's property. The historic setback is 10 feet, so he does meet that side setback, which is why that was not mentioned in Jose's determination letter. So I just wanted to clarify, that was a mistake on my part. Fortunately, we can advertise for more things. What's best is that we don't underadvertise. Fortunately, I also advertised it as a special permit and/or a variance. And in taking a closer look at it, Jose did send a revised determination letter, which was in, I sent out today, and I don't know if everyone got to see that, but that's what's now posted to it, and that's what you have there, if you want to begin with that. The revised letter states that it requires a variance, not a special permit.
For both the FAR and the building coverage?
Yep.
But the setbacks are acceptable.
And I'll let Jose speak to that to confirm.
Do you want to talk a little on that, Jose?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So this one is kind of unique in a way. The applicant does meet the setback for the new structure that he's proposing. The initial letter I issued was based on a special permit, but then, looking at the shape of the lot and the special permit, I didn't think he was kind of creating an adverse impact on the neighbor. But I reconsider issuing a new letter based on a variance because I think that he does present some hardship, and that's the reason the letter was revised and reissued. It's also going over FAR, and he's going over a little bit on building coverage.
Four and a half percent?
Four and a half percent.
Very slight. And the FAR is .04. That's extremely slight. I mean, I think we could look at a reduction in the garage to get through the FAR, but not the building coverage, though it wouldn't really benefit. It'd still be a variance to be issued.
What's driving the variance?
Yeah.
His FAR is .04, and his building coverage is 4.5% over the allowable. So those are not dimensional variances, which would have the three tenants, but an area and floor ratio, so exceeding that. But you don't issue those based on dimensional requirements, so it's not a dimensional variance, so it doesn't need the lot shape, though it certainly would qualify as the house is on a bit of a skew.
I don't know. That doesn't, the house being on a skew doesn't affect the lot shape, and the lot is almost a rectangle, right?
Well, I'm not asking you to lean on that. I don't, it's not dimensional, so it doesn't affect it at all. It is simply lot area, which, you're right, it doesn't matter. It's like a volume decision. And the same with the coverage.
So for this particular variance, you said there's no three tenants for the lot shape?
It's not a dimensional variance, so why do we issue a variance for this? There's lot coverage and FAR.
Okay, so what was the discussion about a hardship? Jose was saying he switched from a special permit to a variance because of a hard, like, I didn't follow that.
I don't think it was because of the hardship.
So why did you switch from a special permit to a variance?
So in general, if you look at the table that is with the plot plan, they went from, and I'm sorry because my map is sideways, I'm going to try that. So they went from, for example, on FAR, the requirement is .20. The actual FAR at the house is .17, and they increased that to .24. And then on the building coverage, they went from .11, 11.4 to 19.4. And for the reason I changed it to the variance, based on the logic for a special permit, if it's, my understanding, if it's creating an impact on the abutter, on the neighbors, and to me, I don't think that was applicable. I thought that, looking at the shape of the lot and the way the house is kind of reconfigured, kind of diagonal to the lot, I thought that it was a hardship to issue a variance instead of a special permit.
But we determine if it's a special permit or a variance based on what kind of exemption they're trying to get outside of the bylaws? Like if it's over 20% or 10% or setbacks, not whether it's a hardship or, isn't that correct?
You need to have a hardship to obtain a variance.
No, 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 I'm saying, but we determine the requirement or need between a special permit or a variance as whether or not they exceed a certain percentage or overage of the bylaw.
To me, it was based on the increasing of a nonconformity structure based on Section 195-AD.
So the specific, like, if there's a single thing that made you go from a special permit to variance, what was that? Or is it multiple things? Like, I'm trying to follow the...
So in this situation, like I said, this one could have gone a special permit, but based on going back to 195-AD and 195-2, I saw this one as a variance, not a special permit, because they increased, they increased the nonconformity that already existed, and also the topography of the lot and the house and...
Jose, when we spoke, didn't you, your concern there, special permit to variance, when we spoke, you mentioned it's because the percentage lot coverage and floor area ratio were conforming initially, even though the dwelling is not, but that those were conforming?
Right.
And then you were concerned that it was creating a nonconformity?
Right, which is on the outline of the...
And that's why you changed it?
Right.
A further nonconformity?
Right.
Things that create nonconformities can be a special permit if the delta is below some limit, and above some limit, it becomes a variance.
But it's already nonconforming, isn't it? Overall, isn't the property already nonconforming?
Well, it is.
Not for the FAR and the building coverage.
Oh, for those particular line items, okay. But the structure in itself?
So for FAR and building coverage, there's no delineation that says below 5% is special permit and above 5% is a variance. It's more subjective?
Okay, I mean, there's not that point. It's not the 20%. It's very easy with the dimensional requirement.
Special permits issued waive a two...
They are required. 40%. How long for a variance? All right, and I have a question, like, what size garage would work without a variance?
Is it a single-story garage?
Yes.
It's currently 23 by 26 feet.
Right, right, got that.
So .04 wouldn't take a lot. We have enough numbers here to pull this off. Nobody brought an engineer, did they?
Yeah, where's the engineers?
I've given that a lot of consideration, but it's...
I've given that a lot of consideration, but I just can't make up of the, of thinking garage if I try to...
I mean, you could, you, you could get away with a 22-foot wide garage. I have one, so I can say this. It's a single door, but it, it works fairly well at 22.
And that's a new, and that's a new structure.
And I think that might get you out of the FAR, but not the lot coverage.
And it's a new structure.
It would only be 24 feet, or 26 feet out of 8,400, so that's not gonna get us 4% or anywhere close to it.
Oh, it's a new addition.
At that point, you know, to get, to get the FAR right is fine, but it wouldn't matter. Still have the, the lot coverage. And I really don't think there should go any smaller than 22 without it becoming difficult.
A variance required, it's a new structure, and, which is causing a nonconformity, so a variance is required.
That's more followable for me.
Yep. 195 AD.
Well, we could stare at this for a little while, I think I'll read some letters in.
Yeah.
And it's not a by right.
This is from the building commissioner. Dear Mr. Therian, this notice serves as denial to the proposed addition at the above regarded address. The addition exceeds FAR by .04 ratio and building coverage by 4.5%. Therefore, creating a new nonconformity and needing a variance from the Board of Appeals for zoning relief. You can appeal this decision within 30 days of this notice at the Community Development Department. Thank you. Respectfully, Jose Niguan, Building Commissioner. I have a letter from the DPW regarding 29 Mission Road. Robert Therian is requesting a special permit and/or variance under section 195.8. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. Record sewer does not show any conflict with the proposed structure. Erosion control devices must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The street should be swept and cleaned from construction dust. Consideration should be made to install the roof drain, drywalls, or the equivalent to infill roof runoff. This is not a requirement for approval. If a driveway is going to be installed that connects to Mission Road, road opening permits and a license contract are required. This permit can be done at 9 Alpha Road. Nobody signed that one. This is from the fire department. Dear members of the board, regarding the special permit variance request for 29 Mission Road, this office finds the following. For 780 CMR 51, a heat detector shall be installed in the new garage. It must be hardwired and interconnected to at least one device located within 20 feet of the nearest door to the garage. This is the minimum required protection. However, we recommend upgrading the entire home to a hardwired interconnected system with smoke and carbon monoxide detection throughout. Plans will be reviewed by this office as part of the building permit process to ensure compliance with the building code and detector locations. This office would approve these plans with these conditions. I respectfully request that you include this letter in your public record as part of your approval process. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain Chelmsford Fire Department Prevention.
And then that's public comment.
Little comment letter here. So this is from Sylvia, I might have a mess with this, Tomayan, 31 Mission Road, North Chelmsford, Mass. Mr. Therian writes, to the honorable members of the zoning board, I am writing in response to the abutter notification legal notice that I received from your office in the mail on June 28, 2025. This letter is for 29 Mission Road, North Chelmsford, on behalf of Robert Therian, requesting a special permit and/or variance under section 195.8 nonconformity to exceed the percentage of lot coverage and floor area ration. And section 195 nonconformity, 20% reduction to reduce the side setback to construct an attached 23 by 26 garage and any other relief deemed necessary. The property is in the residential RB district. A lot questioned abuts my property at 31 Mission Road, North Chelmsford. I am the owner Sylvia Tomayan. The date and time provided by the Board of Appeals for Public Hearing at Town Hall is Thursday, July 10, 2025. I am not available to attend due to a prior commitment. Therefore, I am sending my comments in writing, as instructed in your letter and as instructed by the office staff when I was down at Town Hall on July 3, 2025, to inquire about the subject matter of this letter. I hereby oppose the request for a special permit and/or variance as described in the letter for the following reasons. The garage requested would be intrusively close to my property line on the bedroom side of my home. Aside from presenting privacy issues and unsightliness, I am most concerned about the unwellcome noise that would come with having a garage so close. This proposed garage, in such tight proximity, will interfere with the reasonable enjoyment of my property as retired person. In addition, I have significant concerns about the impact this would have on the resale value of my home. I believe that a fence could possibly mitigate my concerns above and present a possible solution to the privacy concerns, noise reduction, items placed along the garage, i.e. trash containers, and a clean sightline separating the properties. If Mr. Therian were amenable to installing a partial fence on my property to match the existing fence, I believe that all parties could come to a reasonable resolution. I can be notified at an email address if there are any questions. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Silva Tomayan, 31 Mission Road, North Chelmsford. I have a memorandum from the Board of Health with no concerns.
I believe, I'd have to look it up, I'm not sure.
I have a memorandum from the police, no concerns. And that is the extent of my letters. So assuming we could move ahead, would you be amenable to a fence?
I'd like to press the...
I'm gonna ask you to approach the podium.
Should not be considered as increasing nonconformity if it meets setbacks.
Well, he needs a special permit.
Over the years, she's been trying to get me to, the one with her, to put up a fence. I don't want to, you know, it's a lot of money. For me to take it on by myself, I'm, she's seen this opportunity to try to force me to do it on my own now, it's gonna cost me $600 to get an engineering firm and to set two points, to see where my property line is exactly, the right fence. I've got old shrubs between my backyard and her backyard that give us both a lot of privacy. I'd have to hire a company come in, I couldn't get those out myself, to remove them, then to buy the fence material and to pay her to have it constructed, we're talking a lot of money, you know, thousands of dollars. And I think her point, that my garage is abusive to her, well, my garage is within code, you know, as far as it will be 10 and a half feet from her property. And, you know, the idea that she doesn't like what we're doing with our property, well, we own it, you know, and we're not, we're not asking to come closer to her property than what the code allows us, and I don't think I need to spend that much money because she's wanted a fence for years, and now it's up to me to do it. Am I just confused, but you are coming closer to her property? No, we'll be within the code. There's a Silva Tomayan here.
But the required setback is 10 feet. They're within, they're within dimensional setback.
Right. That's what Jose was saying, that they're within.
They're within the dimensional setback.
Historic dimensional setback.
Historic is 10 feet, and it's 10.6.
So, my garage is laid out, so it'll be 10 and a half feet, we'll get that extra half a foot, just to make sure. I was under the impression that you were encroaching, so I apologize. Okay. So that's, that's, that's my feeling on... So those are the letters I have written, I'm gonna open this up to the audience. Are there any questions in favor or opposition to this? Now would be the time.
Alan Costas, One Southwood Drive, Chelmsford. I'm the owner of Finest Builders. I've been contracted with the Therians to build this garage. I've kinda guided them along the way and told them what they needed engineering, they needed plans, we needed to submit them and meet the setback requirements. This overage on the square footage, we made that garage as small as we could to make it fit within the property line, and with the stairs inside the garage and the vehicles in there, and for him to put his barrels in there so he's not outside in the snow, it really doesn't do anything to help them at all, you know, to make it smaller. It just, you know, this is as small as we could possibly make it, to make it comfortable and, and functional. And also, you know, I've been in this business for a long time, 42 years, and anytime I've done anything, it's improved the neighborhood. It's not a deterrent to the neighbor or anything, and it just improves the property and makes the neighborhood more inviting for everybody. So you wouldn't be taking any, from the neighbor, you wouldn't be taking any value away from her property at all. I see this as an opportunity for her, she's trying to get a fence out of the guy, which is kinda what happens nowadays from people. But I, I really think that you should grant this permit to these people so they can enjoy, you know, their elderly years in the home that they've had in the family for 60 years. You know, I don't foresee it being a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Wetmore, and I'll go so far as to say that Bob is my brother-in-law, so you can't hold it against me.
We hold it against you.
I just wanna, it's too bad we don't have a picture of everything, because, do we have a picture? Yeah. This is a well-maintained house that Bob has improved over the years that they've lived there, and the siding is relatively brand-new, and it's gonna be mashed up with the, with, with this here. History tells us that if, if you put an improvement to a property, it doesn't take anything away from the other property, actually it improves that property. The value of that property goes up too. You know, the other side of Bob's house, there was a home that went for $700,000. That increased the value of Bob's house and also Sylvia's house. I mean, so the argument about it's gonna devalue her property is really not there. It's actually gonna improve it. It's gonna be worth more because the whole street's been improved, and there's been a lot of improvement on the street as we're going down. That, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no elevation picture, is there?
Elevation drawing? No, not, not the picture, a drawing, I'm sorry, drawing.
You can change it to a Google map and insert your lines.
Are you looking for the, the future? Yeah, I don't think there are elevations drawn at this point. A plan's drawn yet, Alan, for this elevation?
Yeah, the plans are drawn.
Do we have them?
I have the plans, yeah.
I think this gentleman wanted to peek at them, Rod.
Do you have an elevation drawing?
Take a look at them.
The second page.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Lisa Gogan. I'm a little hoarse. I live at 38 Mission Road. I've been neighbors of theirs for well over 30 years. I grew up with Mara. They take great care of their land. I don't see where it would hurt anybody, the value of land. They've done a lot for their house.
It looks very nice.
It does, and all our houses do, so I can only guarantee that having retirement there would be great. We plan to retire in our house too, so I would go for it. Thank you.
Alice, this is just for aesthetics, this is gonna be two doors?
It's creating a new nonconformity.
I've got a question for the owner. So I heard your argument.
So, Mr. Therian, a question for you. Where those trees are in the, the picture of your, your house, is that on the property line? The, the shrub, the hedges or whatever, the bushes?
Is that the tree that you had removed? That tree is the one I just have removed.
Yeah, but like these guys here, these, these bushes back here, is that on the property line?
Well, actually, I own to the side of the bushes.
Okay.
So those bushes are mine.
But now, if you were to put in a fence, would those bushes have to come down to get the fence up?
Yeah, I mean, this is basically my property line is where, this, you know, principally, like her property line comes about here, just our contingent has, and it goes back and it goes to the, the side of the bike house. So yeah, those are all, I mean, it'd be...
Is there a proposal for how tall this fence is supposed to be, that's supposed to go in?
I, I have, actually...
But that's what she's requesting. And in her initial request, she thought they needed zoning relief for the garage itself, like the setback of the garage. It turns out, there is no zoning relief needed for the setback, it's within...
Right. Now, I, I just wanna say, that I've been, we went over, when we first had the idea we're gonna build a garage, we talked to her, we explained the size, everything about it, we're gonna remove this tree, which never went down this street. So on and so forth. And so today, when my wife looked at the website for this committee, we had no idea that she objected to any. It was like, she never come over and asked, she never asked to see the plans, and like I said, if you look at the plans, we've put a lot of thought into it. It's gonna be stepped out just a little in the front, it's gonna have a cable facing the street, we're gonna have vinyl shingles, not just the vinyl clapboard, we're gonna, with the two-car garage, we're gonna have two separate doors. We rode around a lot of neighborhoods looking at garage doors, and we picked out doors that we think are really gonna look. So, this, this came out of nowhere today, I haven't talked to her, like I said, but she's always wanted to put a fence up between our property, not because we don't get along.
I think what, however it all started too, is when we first told her we were gonna put a garage, she said, "Oh, you're taking my property?" And I'm, I'm Arthur, in his way. And we explained to her, "No, we're not taking your property, we have the enough side yard." And, but that's how she is sometimes, just, you know, so, like he said, she never came over to look at the plans, we never knew she was gonna drop this letter.
We didn't know she had any objection.
So, but...
But we didn't know she had always wanted a fence.
Seems like the stuff there would do some screening, as much as, if not more than a fence, because it looks taller than six feet.
It's pretty well grown in.
You gotta take a lot of those bushes down, obviously. Yeah, so you, you cut all those down to put a shorter fence than the...
And, and the bushes will remain during constr...
Whatever we can keep, we're gonna keep. They, they want their privacy, she's got animals that run around, you know, make a lot of noise, and they want their privacy also.
Certainly, certainly. Are there any other comments this evening?
I have a question that I'm a little confused about, and it's really directed to you, Mr. Chairman. His, I believe that the conforming square footage for a lot in an RB district is 10,000 square feet.
Conforming RB, 40.
40.
It's 40,000 acres.
So it's a nonconforming lot.
Yeah, it is, it's already nonconforming.
Without, without problem.
So, I thought, we have, we've approved variances in the past with nonconforming lots, that they don't, that, that's what I was reading in here, and if I understand my, I had to go to town council the night we did this, that the, these setbacks and fire requirements don't, don't apply to an existing nonconforming lot.
That was Jose's interpretation, I'm, I'm not sure, right?
Yeah, I think we, we, we ran this through, I could, I could reach out to the new town council, but previous conversation with the, the previous town council, that still applies.
They do apply.
They do apply.
FAR does apply?
FAR and building co...
If you look at ED, if you look at ED, insufficient lot coverage does not, insufficient lot, if they meet setback, lot coverage does not, would not be considered an increase in nonconformity, however, they would not be able to incre, they would not be able to incur a nonconformity by FAR if they currently meet FAR, they cannot...
It's just the setbacks that...
No, it, it's the...
And he's not.
So they're gonna, they're gonna add a nonconformity by no longer complying with FAR, and that's the problem.
No longer complying?
Right, because they comply with FAR now.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little behind the times.
Yeah.
And that's why it's a variance.
That's why it's a variance. That's why it's a variance.
Gotcha.
Because the FAR is the one thing that we cannot, they're adding to the non-conformity with a new, they're, they're adding a new non-conformity, which is the FAR. And the FAR, you can't. By special permit. Even though it's currently a non-conforming lot, they're not increasing a current non-conformity. Does that make sense?
Yep, makes perfect sense. I just, I was misreading the paragraphs, that's all.
They're in compliance with their FAR.
They're in the non-conformity, they're just increasing FAR.
Right, which is going from conformed to non-conformed, and that's where we get the variance required.
By point oh four.
Yeah.
That's inconsequential.
I, I really think, you know, the board ought to take a hard look at this one. I mean, these are people that, like, they've said sixty years, they've been owning the home.
It's, it really is inconsequential.
It really, yeah. I, I mean, the things we've had to approve because of the state and things like that, it just, to me, from the plans I just saw, it looks like it's going to be a beautiful garage. They meet the side setback and I think we ought to.
Yeah, he's going to raise the comps for the whole neighborhood.
I really do. You know, these are one of the ones that I think we ought to take a good, hard look at and not be so hard-nosed on saying no to variances, you know. I, it's a non-conforming lot already, right?
And they're meeting setbacks.
Right.
Yes, right.
And it's not like they're going twenty percent over or, you know, thirty percent over FAR. Like, we've, I mean, we've had some pretty large FAR requests before.
And I think also it's, it's kind of our duty to look out for our town, people that live in the town and trying to be a little safer with health issues. And my father went through this, had to clean out his garage, so I know exactly what they're talking about.
And as a, and as a disabled veteran of myself and knowing what modifications my home is going to require in another ten years, I'm already making modifications as it is.
Garages are awesome.
I might say I'm in the same vote as you are, and pretty soon I'm going to have to make improvements to my house.
Got a card, Alan, for? All right, well, I'm going to make a, or I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
If we're through with questions and such, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Motion, who's second?
Jamie, second? Bud, all in favor?
Aye.
Here's close, I think we can take this up now. I really don't see any, any problem with approving this, as, I realize it's a variance and that's a bit of a dirty word, but this is as minor as it could possibly be. And if we can't offer some relief to people that are in this position, wait, wait, wait.
Who's, who's voting on this?
I'm not, you guys are.
So you will be, I will be, Jamie, Charlie, and Peter.
This is the first time we've heard this one.
Correct.
That's correct, that's correct, no continuance.
I, I just wanted to say something before we voted. I understand the health issues, I understand, you know, the garage, I understand the side setbacks, I understand everything. But just as we're voting, I just want, like, everyone to know we're voting on the lot and the land and the house. We're not voting for, you know, medical issues or whatever, we're voting on the, the neighborhood, the house.
Right. It's definitely.
That's all I wanted to say.
Which appears to have quite a few eighty-four hundred or similar lots.
Right, it doesn't seem like it, it does anything to upset the neighborhood in my mind.
No, I mean, this, it's adding to the neighborhood, it's adding to the value of their property and the properties around it. It's meeting setbacks, so it's not encroaching on anyone else's property lines by current standards. So, I mean, looking at how is it infringing, imposing on their neighbors, I don't see any. And it's not becoming grossly overbearing on the land coverage overall.
When you said the thing about the neighbors, I'm assuming we are not adding any stipulations for fences with our.
Nope, the setback's not an issue.
I was in that direction until I understood there is not an encroachment.
There's no setback issues.
Really have a right to.
I just wanted to make sure we understood where we are.
Where I misunderstood, I would have said this is something I'd like to see to appease the neighbor, and it's right if we're coming an inch closer, but we're not. He is within his setbacks, and that, to me, is enough.
But I mean, for me, I already thought there's privacy screening there. To take privacy screening down, to put other less effective privacy screening up, doesn't seem.
More appealing to the neighbor, but.
I personally like looking at vegetation more than fake wood, so, or, or plastic. I, I don't know about anybody else, but I prefer looking at vegetation, so.
Take paradise, put up a parking lot.
That sounds like a motion.
I'm, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for twenty-nine Mission Road with all the letters written in or read into our meeting, with the exception of the fence. The, the fence is not going to happen.
It's just to exceed the FAR.
Neighbor wants to put in a fence, it is their right, so they could worry that fence.
Before we vote, I want to, again, I guess, clarify, this variance does not need lot shape, the topography, or whatever the other thing is for this, because it's a non, because it's a non-dimensional variance.
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that as well.
Voting on the FAR, we're not just setback.
Coverage.
I have to second the motion, right?
You can, and yes, Peter seconded.
Peter seconded, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to have my vote recorded, even though you don't.
Unanimous.
Good luck with it.
Good luck with it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Enjoy your garage.
Jamie, you're, you're a disabled person? I, I go every day to bed.
Good luck with it.
So do I. Well, at least once a week. I get all my medical treatment there.
I do too, a hundred percent.
Okay, I love a happy ending.
That's why I have this.
That was a nice ending.
That's why my plates say what they say.
Good evening.
Evening.
And I don't do stairs. I've had a knee replacement, ankle reconstruction, shoulder repair.
This is sixty-one sixty-three Middlesex Street. Everett Murray is requesting an administrative appeal under the zoning law, by law section one ninety-five, four oh two B three, for the inability to conduct auctions. Oh, for the inability to conduct auctions as a premises per the building commissioner's determination and denial decision and any other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the light industrial IA district.
Good evening, Greg Hallidina for the petitioner Everett Murray. Mr. Murray is here with his wife. Mr. Murray owns sixty-one sixty-three Middlesex Street. He purchased it in January of twenty twenty-three. And as you stated, it's in the IA zone where among the permitted uses is warehouse. And Mr. Murray intends to use a portion of the property for a warehouse. Now, Mr. Murray also owns a business Triple M Moving and Storage. He's operated Triple M for over twenty-four years, and among other things, a principal part of their business is doing move-outs in eviction cases, which requires you store property that you take out of a prop, a home where the tenant has been evicted. And a warehouseman, as you may know, is statutorily subject to a series of requirements when you warehouse goods. It's a regulated industry, and one of the most technical regulations is chapter two thirty-nine, section four relating to evictions. When a warehouseman takes property in an eviction or a mover takes it out, there are requirements that you store the goods for six months. If they're unclaimed, then you have a lien on the goods that you've stored, and then they're sold in a manner authorized under the Uniform Commercial Code. The eviction statute also goes on to say that the property is sold by auction, the owner has specific rights. The owner can buy one portion of the whole property, it'll have to buy it as a lot. But the statute specifically refers to auctions occurring in connection with eviction move-outs. And the Uniform Commercial Code, which provides for warehousemen's liens, whether it's an eviction or just any other storage situation where you have a customer storing property, if they don't pay, then there's a lien, and it can be enforced by a private sale or a public auction. And the statute, the Uniform Commercial Code specifically says that any sale, private sale or public, must be at the nearest suitable place where the goods are stored. It's almost as if there's a statutory requirement that you do the sale near to where you're storing the goods. Otherwise, there might be incentive to hold an auction a hundred miles from where the goods are stored, and that would create a disincentive from people bidding and buying their property, their own property. Mr. Murray is a licensed auctioneer, and Becky, if you could pull up, I think it's the, on the agenda, on the revised agenda, it's the tenth item down.
The state certificate?
Yes.
Is it this one or the other? The other? Auctioneer, okay.
There it is. So, there you go. Yeah, Mr. Murray has been licensed for, as an auctioneer by the state for almost thirty years. Previously, his last location where he had a warehouse was in Townsend, and he conducted auctions there. He was licensed by the selectmen in Townsend. He sold that property, but while he was at Townsend, he had no incidents or problems storing property and conducting auctions there. Now, after buying sixty-one sixty-three Middlesex Street, Mr. Murray had to undertake a few things. As you can see from his license, he does business as Murray and Murray Auctioneers. He's an individual. So he needed a business certificate from the town, and he also needed what he believed was an auctioneer permit. So if you look at the, I did a screenshot of the town's website, I believe that's the sixth one down on the revised agenda. Becky, if you could go to that.
Looking for it. You're talking about our bylaw, correct?
Yes. Actually, no, the screenshot, no, not that one, it's the screenshot of the town website, where it lists all the permits that are available and which board issues them.
Oh, the select board license listing?
That might, yes, that would be it. Sure. This is a screenshot from the town website, and you can see that lists all permits and licenses and who issues them, and you can see Department of Public Works. And on the next page, if you keep scrolling down, you'll see the select board, and I have it in yellow, auctioneer licenses. According to the town website, the select board issues the auctioneer licenses. And I believe the next attachment shows, not only does the board of selectmen, or at least the town, promulgate a list of licenses and who issues them, and among them are auctioneers for the select board, they publish a fee schedule. And you can see they charge fees for either a daily auction permit or a yearly auction permit. This is the board of selectmen's schedule of fees. And then based on all of this, if you go down to the next attachment, I believe it was the eighth one, Becky, right after this. There is an application for an auctioneer's permit that's promulgated by the board of selectmen, which Mr. Murray completed, and it had not yet been filed yet, because as I indicated, he's doing the auctions for Triple M Moving and Storage, that actually does the moving and warehousing. He's going to conduct the auction, he's the licensed auctioneer, and he does business as Murray and Murray. So he has to get a business certificate, and he believes he has to submit this to the select board, the application for an auctioneer's license. And if you could go, Becky, to the fifth attach, attachment there. That's the business certificate that Mr. Murray had prepared. And it was this business certificate that he circulated and went to the building commissioner to get the sign-off required. And that's when he learned from Mr. Negron, his opinion that the act of conducting auctions is prohibited within Chelmsford.
Within the IA, not Chelmsford.
I believe Mr. Negron said townwide.
I think it's the industrial, the IA that created the, the confusion. You can speak to that, Jose, I'm sorry.
In the district in which Mr. Hallidina is representing his client, is in an IA district, and the auctioneer business is not allowed.
My recollection, Jose, is that you had indicated it was not permitted anywhere in town? Is it Mike? It's not listed anywhere on the.
So is it prohibited? No.
It's just not listed as a permitted use anywhere in town, not just in the IA. It's not as if it's something you could do in certain districts, but not in IA. It's just not listed as approved anywhere in Chelmsford. In any event, after learning that from Mr. Negron, we filed this application for administrative appeal. And interestingly enough, too, if you could get, look at chapter one sixteen of the town bylaws, use of public buildings. It says auctions are not permitted in public property. Why would there be a, a bylaw saying you can't do something on public property if you can't do it anywhere in town? I mean, clearly, just you can't use public buildings for auctions, but there is obviously the possibility of using private property to conduct auctions. And again, based on all of that, that's why we're asking for an appeal of Mr. Negron's determination.
That says you can't do it in public buildings with an exception.
Except for town business.
Yeah, so that doesn't say you can't do it in, in public buildings, just you can't do it except for town business.
Town could have an auction.
Yeah, in a public building.
In any event, the warehouse use broadly incorporates the obligatory auctions that are conducted by warehousemen. If you're allowed to use something for a warehouse, it almost includes enforcing the liens you have on the property that you're storing. It's part and parcel of warehousing. That's as evidenced by the statutory scheme that I outlined. And even if the warehousing were to be narrowly defined, and then to enforce your liens, that's a whole separate use to auction off what you're storing. Even if that were the case, it would clearly be, in my opinion, an accessory use. Accessory to the warehouse use is conducting auctions to enforce your liens. It's certainly incidental to the permitted use of warehousing. It's statutorily required that you do certain things when you have a warehouse and you're enforcing a lien on the property. And if you think it through, what would be the implications of not allowing auctions anywhere? How many times do you see in the newspaper ads for a foreclosure sale by a mortgage company, a bank foreclosing? They always, almost always, they say, we're going to have the auction sale on the premises. That just happens every day. If you hear ads, the radio, you hear J.J. Manning, they conduct auctions instead of regular sales of property, they conduct them on the property site. Auctions on private property are not uniformly and blanket, and prohibited by any blanket prohibition. They're just not listed as a specific permitted use, but it's clearly part, to me, it's part of warehousing, it's part and parcel. Or it's at least an accessory use. It's incidental to what you're doing as a warehouse. And for those reasons, we're just asking if we could conduct either as part of our warehousing or incidental to our warehousing is to conduct auctions, perhaps once a week, just to unload property that is stored in our warehouse that we hold a lien on and we're complying with the statutory requirements. And among them are conducting the sale as near, at the nearest suitable place where the goods are stored. That would be in the building where we're storing them.
So I could ask you a couple of questions. One, do you feel is adequate parking were you to have an auction?
Yeah, there are fifty-one parking spaces, forty of them are available on the building.
And do you have any idea how many auctions you would anticipate in a year?
We'd anticipate only doing them on Saturdays. Once or twice a month.
There would be fifteen is a possibility, or twenty or something it would. I'm, I'm concerned that it, all of a sudden, it's a flea market, to be honest with you, all of a sudden, something's being sold every, every.
Oh, no, no, this is, that's, Mr. Murray's been operating Triple M Moving for thirty years. I mean, this is what he does. I mean, it's.
But I, I think that, you know, once, once you have the auctioneer's license, maybe it becomes convenient to have auctions there pretty regularly, so. I, I did notice that the town has a daily permit for auctions that you can fill out, which is very curious. You can fill out and have an auction in town, I don't quite know where, daily or yearly, there were two separate fees for each.
Right.
I mean, I, I think if, if, and certainly got some conversation here, but if we did it, we would allow it to be on a, on a daily basis with a cap on the auctions per year. But I think it makes sense that you have the auction, where the property is stored, I, I know you're not going to display it, or, you know, you're going to say, this is what we have, and probably a little like on TV.
It's a statutory requirement, you have to have it at the nearest.
That's a requirement, that's a state requirement.
The Uniform Commercial Code, yes.
You don't relocate it.
No, you don't.
So he's really limited from having the auction if he doesn't do it there. He can't put it somewhere else.
No, not under the Uniform Commercial Code.
It just says you have to do it in the nearest allowed.
Near suitable place.
Yeah, nearest suitable place, so.
Where the goods are stored.
Right, but if, if for some reason you couldn't do it in that, like, if the warehouse didn't have any.
Zero parking.
Zero room, like, if, if it was a tiny warehouse and it was filled to capacity. Zero room, like if, if it was a tiny warehouse and it was filled to capacity, and not that this is the case.
Yeah.
But if one had to then do an auction, and they had a warehouse across the street, they could do it in the nearest suitable location, which would be not at the property, based on what I'm hearing for the law, right?
That's what it sounds like, yeah. But if you can't do it in Chelmsford, you would have to leave town to do that.
Whatever the nearest suitable location is, whether that's Bilica or...
Yeah, but based on the building commissioner's determination, it's not permitted anywhere in town, so...
No, I, I did not say that. As a matter of fact, you can read, I don't know if you have record of my letter, but Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, can you read the letter for the record?
Yep, I'll be glad to read that right in. I don't think I saw it on the entire list.
To your understanding, is there ever a limit to the amount of auctions someone can have once they have that auctioneer license or whatever?
So, Steve, to be more specific, basically, when somebody come to establish a business in town, I try to help as much as possible. And there is a provision in the bylaw that says if you cannot find that specific business within the table, then you go to retail uses and services, not health, set forth, which is this case. I couldn't find anywhere in which I could, and I, I talked to the planning depart, to the planning department, and we try to find ways to help. Unfortunately, the interpretation is that it is a retail, they are providing services is retail. People will come in, come out, people will buy, people will... So, based on that, I, I had no choice but to deny it.
So, the retail is tied to the auction or just the warehouse in general?
It's, it's tied, it's tied to the, to the, to the, to the business type, auction.
The use.
To the use, right.
But if, if this was a warehouse that was not doing auctions, then it would not be classed as retail, is that...
If it was a warehouse, then I would have to go to the bylaws if warehouses are allowing that district.
But...
It's like industrial district, not retail, not commercial. IA is different than commercial.
Yeah, but it can be a warehouse where it is because that's what it's... So, I'm just trying to understand, is it being classed as retail, not because it's a warehouse, but because auctions are happening?
Right, right.
So, if, right. So, if an auction ever happened, it wouldn't be classified as a retail...
Right.
Correct. But even, based on, if you look at it as a flea market, or based on that explanation, according to the bylaws, it is authorized.
So, I think what Jamie is referring to is in the zoning of principal use, E industrial, this is one ninety-five, attachment one point five, one five? I'm not sure what that number...
Retail sale of goods.
Item twelve is retail sale of goods, the majority of which are produced or undergo processing on the premises, are allowed in an IA district, and is yes. Item twelve...
So, undergo processing is like handling and...
I mean, it's not, processing is not defined, so, I mean, it's not manufactured.
Definitely not manufactured. That would not apply.
Right.
Or produced.
It is processed in the fact that it's there, it's housed, it's stored, catalogued, and then processed and auctioned.
What number did you say, Brian?
Item, it's, item twelve, E industrial, principal use, on attachment one semicolon five, one ninety-five, attachment one, I don't know what that means.
There's also, if you look two pages back, there's also a reference about flea markets and yard sales is permitted in the IA district as well.
I'm missing, I'm missing this section. I'm sorry, what's the section again?
It's the chart in the back of the book.
It's the use chart that you looked at.
Use chart in the back of the book.
Under industrial, under section E of the zoning use chart.
One ninety-five, attachment one...
I'm trying to find it online.
Point five? Oh, one point five, I see. Attachment three five.
Go forward. You're too far back.
Towards the end of the book.
You're too far back. No, you're good. It's, yep. And industrial. Yeah, upside down. It's the one page, it's upside down.
Yep.
And the page before that, there's a reference to flea markets and garage sales and yard sales, which says is also authorized in the IA district. So, if you want to coate auctions to yard sales or flea markets...
Well, auctions are not specifically...
But those are products, those, those are...
I'm just saying.
Those are goods that are, this, that definition does not fit the auctioneer because they are not producing product on site.
But they are processing.
It says processing, not producing. It says processing. And you, you mentioned it being a retail...
It may in fact be a little vague to be processing, but...
And you said we are...
You take the goods, you issue a warehouse receipt, you store them, you publish them...
Publish them and sell them.
It's process, not produce, right? It says process, not produce.
It does say process.
If you look at like the UPS warehouse or the Amazon warehouse...
They're processing.
Would you say they're processing?
Those are defined as distribution centers in Arizona by laws. They're not warehouses.
I, I just couldn't hear you. I need...
Yeah, so, just, you can't, you've got to be careful. Distributions are defined in Arizona by laws as distribution centers. So, UPS is a distribution center. It is not a warehouse. That was a hot topic at town meeting a couple of years back.
Okay.
So, that's very distinct definition. I think Jose's interpretation of this is that this acts like a retail, and that is why it's not currently allowed in IA.
But this says retail is allowed in IA.
Retail is not allowed in IA. It's allowed in CB.
Well, you might look at the authorized use chart because it says right there, retail goods allowed for sale.
Majority of which are produced.
If they're part of the produce, majority that are manufactured and produced, that's, I mean...
It doesn't say manufactured.
We are, and then to take a step back, the planning board is also looking at rezoning potential sections of town to a CB light. We're in that process, which we hope to bring in front of town meeting, maybe not this fall, but next spring, that would address some of these issues. But I think where Jose and this kind of came up is because we don't have auction, per se, defined, this, they had to make an interpretation of how this best fits, and they're saying that it best fits more as a retail than...
Well, would you consider an auction, and I'm, I don't know why I'm asking you, actually?
I mean, I'm not...
Would you consider that a retail sale of goods, an auction?
I would.
I would.
I would, to be quite honest. That's where...
Specifically, it says, number twelve, the retail sale of goods, the majority of which are produced, which we agree they are not produced...
Yeah.
...or undergo processing on the premises.
Right, but processing, I think from a, like, a warehouse manufacturing, like, is a transfer, I would interpret as a transfer, like, something's changed. It got processed, changed.
It is, it is being changed.
Does Amazon process a product? It comes in one end, it goes out the other?
I know, I know we're saying that's a distribution center, not a warehouse.
That's not a warehouse.
But I'm looking for the definition of processing, so...
There used to be furniture sold out of that building, so...
They, they bring it in, they inventory it, catalog it, and they sell it. It's being, it's going through a process.
I mean, again, I mean, there's some planning board members, you know, we could debate what that is. I, when I think of processing, I think it's gone through a transformation, like, with process, it's done, it's different.
I don't know. I'm kind of a fan of it, the storage war on TV. I would call what they do, this is the truth, I would call what they do, processing.
That's, that's...
They take everything out of the storage unit, they decide what to do with it, and it goes in a direction.
Yep.
I would, I would say that would be processing.
An auction is a retail sale. You just keep charging the price.
The retail sale is allowed.
It's not.
Again, it's not...
I mean, I'm not saying, either way, I just wanted to provide...
And I know we're not looking at a huge problem. We're going to have auctions in every corner, right?
Any further clarification from any amendments to the zoning by the planning board?
We're only looking to comply with our regulatory obligations of when, you know, property is abandoned by the owner for whom we're storing it to enforce our lien.
Right.
This is not a business operation, per se, so it's going to be a very limited impact is...
This is just in conjunction with what he needs to do to continually run his business.
Yeah, I would take the position that, even if, you know, we, I, you know, except if it's retail and it's processed, fine, that's one argument. Another argument is it's part of warehousing. How else can you conduct a warehouse if you can't...
It comes in one and it goes out the other.
Off the dox by statute, and you have to do it under a certain way.
And that's how you recover some lost...
Or it's incidental use. It's accessory, either way. You know, the only problem is it's not listed anywhere as a separate use.
Well, I think the zoning thing kind of makes it clear here.
But he's, and that's his way of recovering any lost capital that could not from...
Absolutely. And he's made a significant investment. I mean, the deed recites consideration of over three million dollars he paid for this building. And he's operated warehouses in the past. It's been successful. He's had no problems in other towns. And when you look at what is issued by the selectmen, auctioneer licenses...
Amazon.
There's a fee schedule for auction permits. They tell you can get auction, everything strikes me as something that can be done, particularly if it's only incidental or actually part of the warehousing use. That, that's our view.
And I, I gotta say, I don't find it, pardon the word, criminal at all to do an auction on this, like, I think it would be unnoticed, honestly. It would be, and we, we do want to do it so it's, it's by the town's bylaws and rules, but, I mean, I think we've kind of met the onus here. I, I feel we have.
So, a arbitrary website...
Oh, count on those guys.
Where eprocarrier.com, what is a processing facility for packages? The carrier facility is one of the most important milestones and acts as a hub where packages are sorted, processed, and routed to their final definition. So, it's not saying you have to change it into something else, or boil it, or paint it, it's just...
It gets it to its next location.
I got it, I held it, I labeled it, and I moved it someplace else.
It to another destination.
And even an idea of the value of it would be determined.
Well, and this is in the retail sale of it.
This is worth a hundred dollars. That's, that's a process.
Right.
That's what you do.
Yep.
Yep. I don't know.
Do you feel we're off track here, Jose, as far as your interpretation?
I think my, my interpretation remains the same. I do respect everybody's point of view and the way you're looking at it. I believe that what you are describing as a retail facility, to me, is, is, is very different than my, what I see on the bylaws. Maybe I seen how auctioneers work, you know, a lot of people come to the premises, there is a lot of gathering, then maybe this is not the case with this one.
But what I, I think what I, what we're saying, though, is disregarding how many attend, do you agree that an auction can be classified, like, selling of goods that are processed? Right? Auction is not, you don't consider auctioning a retail?
So, I'm, I'm struggling with that definition for auctioneers.
Why is...
And again, maybe, like I said, I, I watch a lot of auctioneer shows and stuff, maybe I'm missing the point a little bit here.
They get items and process it and send it to the next body.
But to me, it's completely different than, than, than packaging and, and it's, it's, it's not, I understand there is a component of, a component of, of processing the item somehow because people have to purchase them.
Itemize it, tag it, give it a number.
Value it, inventory it.
But I, at the end of the, you know, I will respect your opinion on the matter and whatever decision you...
What is your definition of auctioneer? You said we have a different definition. What is...
The way I seen it is, you know, gathering of people coming around and, and betting on, bidding on items to purchase and that kind of stuff.
Okay, so there's a purchasing going on in your definition?
Which is sales.
They're buying things, right? That, that's part of the auction process, that at some point, people exchange some form of a product for some form of payment, which is...
In that specific district, I think it's in process, I believe, that building as well, to change to retail kind of thing. Again, I'm going by that provision of the bylaw that I kind of, when somebody like Mr. Halalina or the applicant comes, I try to help as much as possible.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
I think the bylaw is a little, you know...
The rules are the rules, and that's your job to, to interpret them and respond as such.
But again, I respect whatever decision you get the board makes to the, I'm good with it.
I mean, I, my, my opinion, it is an incidental, I mean...
Use of, 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 of storage business.
As a warehouse, as a business owner for a warehouse, that is how, that is their primary means of recouping lost capital. And if he's moving in storage, like, that's, that's, it's just a known function of the, and they, the state has like regulatory requirements that how long they have to hold it, how they can get rid of it, how the lien process, like, it's regulated. It's not like he can just randomly start selling people's stuff. So, it's very well controlled. I mean, he's, so, I don't, I don't think this is something where he's just out there, like, it's going to turn into some auction, flea market kind of deal every Saturday or every day of the week.
Flea market is actually allowed, so...
Which, which is allowed. Either way, it's even, it's even allowed in that zone.
And even if it is every Saturday, there's nothing that says there's a limit to how many auctions you can have, right? So...
Yeah, no, I was just trying to get the scale of it understood, so...
Are there any comments? Yeah, and letters and all that?
I don't know that I have them, I don't know.
I'll hand them to you.
Yep, I don't believe I have them.
We'll switch. Switch.
This is from the Fire Prevention Office. Dear members of the board, regarding the administrative appeal for sixty-one, sixty-three Middlesex Street, this offers the following findings. Without comprehensive floor plans, including but not limited to life safety, architectural, fire alarm, sprinkler, and any other applicable plans, an opinion not to be formed as the purpose use, proposed use. A full code analysis by a registered design professional should also be provided for review by this office to evaluate any pertinent codes, standards for the proposed use. After the above named documents have been provided, this office will be fully able to weigh in on the administrative appeal. Please include this letter in the decision process to make it part of the public record. Can I ask you, if, if you have these items and the owner of the item comes and says, "I want to pay my storage fees," or whatever the deal is, how would they remove that? Would they themselves enter the building and just take the stuff? You would deliver to a point?
No, they don't. They, they would bring a truck to the loading dock, and the workers will bring it down to the loading dock.
Podium.
Yeah, if you could speak in the podium, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
In that case, they would bring a truck to the loading dock, and we'd bring the stuff down to them, and they're loaded up.
And is the principal dwelling sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay, that's really good.
Fully sprinkled.
Okay, thank you.
One more question before you leave. Is there a, I assume there's a, a limit, like, the, the fire limit of how many people can be in the building? Like, is there some, like, you know, less than a hundred people, like, what's the...
Yeah, well, I'm expecting no more than twenty people, you know, at the auction.
So, within the auctions, you're within the, the capacity of the fire, whatever?
Yes.
Fire, code, occupancy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, how does that apply? Like, what, what, what are they, what, I'm, I'm trying to understand, what can, what are they going to make him do to his already existing building for...
I think they'd want to make sure it was sprinkled minimally. I mean, like, Peter, that this, this used to sell furniture out of this very building.
Yeah, but, I mean, the building already exists, and it's there, and it's been there for a hundred years, let's say.
Yes, yes.
Depending on what's being used, if there was any hazardous materials, they might implement specific storage requirements for fire safety.
But it doesn't sound like they're asking that. They're just saying we need plans, like, they're not asking what you store there. They're just saying, "Well, we need floor plans and..."
Well, are there, there must be fire plans on file, right? Well, are there, there must be fire plans on file, right?
Yeah, there will be a calculation law for fire loads and also occupancy for people, how many person at a given time will be at the, which, I don't know how this is gonna be controlled, how many people you're gonna have.
How do you control...
Their occupancy certificate already has to have had that when they get in, when they...
Sometimes, unfortunately, nothing but, I mean, we issue the occupancy, but...
It's a big building, it could be quite a large number.
The auction's done face-to-face, or virtual, or...
Face-to-face, I understand.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna read the rest of the letters, and we can have a better discussion, I think. This is from Lieutenant Jason Empor. I will not be able to offer an opinion on this matter until we know on the record what is being auctioned. That's from the Police Department. Building Department's denial letter. The Board of Health has no concerns. The DPW has no concerns. And this is in a butter letter. Dear Honorable Board Members, I am a co-owner of ZMD LLC DBA Brickhouse Pizza North. We are direct to butter located at 67 Middlesex Street. We have no objection to the Everett Murray conducting auctions on its property located at 6163 Middlesex Street. Zilly Brett Fay, co-owner Brickhouse North, 67 Middlesex Street.
Right down there by the...
Direct to butter used to be a medical place.
That's correct. This is where the building is, right there.
I think so.
Does he extend my letters?
I had a little comment. I'm glad the planning board's taken up the specifics of this auctioneer thing, but I think since we're, might vote on this yes or no, if we do, I think we should do a temporary permit for starters, you know, like, like a month or two months, and...
Why?
Just, just to make sure that works.
But how can we temporarily permit something that's...
What, what would be the basis of extending the temporary, like, what would we be waiting for?
Something that's been authorized by the, by the...
Because, because we've never had this situation before, you know, just wanna make sure it goes okay.
We haven't had it in this specific building, or in an IA dish, like, I don't...
That I can remember.
There's auctions all over town.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, but there's no auction house, so to speak.
It's not an auction house.
It's a warehouse with an incidental use.
He's gotta sell the stuff he's taking.
The product is gonna be there whether it gets auctioned or not, to the respect of the fire and...
Or, or he's just an auction.
These items are there, they're legally stored there, they're allowed to be stored there, if something illegal is stored there, that, that is a different conversation. If something there shouldn't be, that, that's a different conversation. But the items that are taken out of a home, every day, people move, they put them in storage, these are the people that cannot either afford or choose not to retrieve them, and then at a point through due process, they sell them. So what we're...
Mr. Chairman, I think council should clarify on that, because I thought I heard somebody say that they are not gonna have auctions there, but I think auctions are...
No, he thought, he thought it was auction, that it was an auctioneer house, like, and, like, that's their primary means.
No, this isn't gonna be Christie's or Sotheby's, we're not conducting auctions, it's just incidental to warehousing.
He thought it was an auction house.
Oh, no, it's not.
I don't think this will affect any of them, I'm just curious, just curious myself, most of the product that goes in there comes out of storage boxes where people have defaulted?
Sell the storage?
It's homes, like evictions, if a tenant is evicted, and their goods have to be placed in storage under statute for six months by a bonded lease warehouseman such as Mr. Murray.
So what will happen after the six months if the, if the owners don't claim those products?
During the six months, the owner has a right to at least one visit to check on their property, and then after the six months, if they keep paying, they can store it, if they don't pay, then it's auctioned off.
Which, which way is auction off?
It means they would publish in the newspaper there's gonna be an auction.
And people will come to the building.
Correct.
That's what I want.
I mean, Orgz Fitness just did that a couple of months ago with their site over there in Drum Hill, they just had an auction for all their equipment inside Drum Hill.
It's very common practice to auction off a, this would be in a specific area, but...
I know, I missed it too.
I'm gonna lust at being a problem to the town, I, I...
Got a comment, got a comment from the audience?
Yes, yes, sir.
Excuse me. I just wanna clarify something. During the course of the six months, we have to send out certified mails to these tenants, let them know where their property has been stored, how much their rent is, and all that stuff. So that's what, you know, lead us, lead us to an auction if they don't, they don't comply with those regulations.
So if, if my property is in your warehouse by the result of an eviction, you've got my whole living room set, you send me a letter and say, I've got your living room set, it's being stored, and it's $200 a month for storage.
Yes.
If I'm three months in, and I say, I have your three months of storage, I'm bringing my truck, I want my stuff...
Of course.
Then that's the end of it. I give you the money, you pack my truck, and we never see each other again.
Exactly.
Okay.
Even if it's five months, and the last day to make it six months, then you have the right to still get your stuff.
And, and what they have to pay you is the storage fee?
Yes.
At that point, you would not get the storage fee, but you would be entitled to earnings on the auction.
Right.
After six months.
Yes.
Some or all of your investment in storage.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
But you had said we've never had a situation like this, there's auctions that have occurred around town.
I guess I wasn't paying attention.
Yeah, we've had auctions occur around town, so...
Is there a moving-in storage company that does it on a regular basis? I mean, I can kinda...
Yeah, the, the...
Move it or lose it.
I'm thinking of a place in Lower...
Move it or lose it does.
Do they?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are we ready to close the public hearing, or are there some further questions?
Did you take public comment from the floor?
Oh, that's correct. If anyone would like to speak in favor or opposition to this, now would be the time.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we're losing this.
Please approach the podium, and we'd ask for your name and address. Ralph Block, Two Edwards Place, diagonally across the street from the building. I don't have any objection to conducting auctions. You have to get rid of some of the stuff, the building can only hold so much, and this poor guy can't be on the hook for all these rental fees without being able to recoup some of his, his costs. So business-wise, it all makes sense. Where I have an issue is signage, lighting, hours of operation. At midnight, you can read a book on my front lawn. The illumination from that whole building area is crazy. I've, I've been by, but I've not noticed the illumination at night, so... Go by, go by after dark, it's, it's pretty bright.
Is the, is the light from signage, or just from inside the building?
Well, no, since the realtor moved out of there, the, the signage is no longer neon. We only have one neon sign to deal with, and I, my understanding was that neon signs weren't permitted. The neon sign is on 51, it's not on 61. So this is not, yeah, okay, he's not the owner of the neon sign? No, it's an ancillary thing.
That's the other building.
Gotcha. So far, the si, the signage on their building is tasteful. It's flat against the building, it's not obtrusive, it's fine. So I just want some kind of assurance that we're not gonna be dealing with Las Vegas signery, signage on, on that building. So there is a process to, to get a sign, and sadly, the sign advisory commission is, I don't know, defunct in a sense, but I do know that Paul Kona is trying to get it back where it belongs, so that we have some teeth in, in forcing them, but they would have to apply for any change in signage to the town. That would be awesome, if that gets put in effect, that would be great.
Don't they have light? We have a loom stan, illumination standards and lighting standards, do you not?
Yeah, once, once the LEDs came in, it got really complicated. LEDs are not measured in lumens, but in nits. And that, that just made a mess of the bylaw, and, and it really fell apart, I don't, I don't have a reason why.
But we definitely, I mean, we definitely, there is, there is guidance on how bright lighting can be, even from a residence, but a commercial property, so...
But it's, but it's not enforced.
Right, I mean, that, yeah, true.
We, again, we had issue with, with 51, not 61, where the lighting was on the... You just don't wanna see 61 increase the lighting more than... Don't wanna see it increase anymore. Is that an anticipation you have, Mr. Murray, at all, or Mr. Halladina, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any intention of increasing the lighting, the exterior lighting on the building?
I didn't know we had a problem with that.
I'm learning this as well, so I guess, if, my, I think what he's saying is, your building is not a problem, but he doesn't want it to become one, so as a good neighbor, maybe you could avoid, avoid adding lighting if you can... There are a couple of light fixtures on his building that face the street. Common sense would, would dictate that the light shouldn't be facing the street, it should be facing from the street to the building. I get the purpose for the lighting, I... Keep everyone safe and keep... Keep everybody safe, keep the whole criminal element out of there, and that's great, it I just don't wanna see it get any brighter. Yep, yep.
Well, he, he sounds like he's very amenable, if he just...
That's what I was just gonna say, yeah.
And I suspect you could wander over there.
And you know what? Jose has worked with us as far as making corrections on, on other lighting in the area, and I, I don't have any problem with cooperation. Everybody's been great. I just don't wanna see it get any worse. We've, we've taken a, a residence that basically should have been condemned when it was purchased, okay? And you guys are getting, well, not you guys, but the town is now getting $8,400 a year in taxes out of us every year for improvements that we've made on the home. Yeah? I... Well, I, I think we could assume Mr. Murray had his word, and that he would not increase the lighting, and he has no plans to, Mr. Halladina, is that correct?
No.
Do you have an office in that building?
I do, yes.
Stop over and have a cup of coffee, and you can, you can talk about it all over. Absolutely, and that's why I asked him that. It's the easiest way to solve any of these, you know?
Neighborly.
I, I would rather go and sit and talk to the gentleman than stand here and worry about it.
On his mailing list.
I don't need any more stuff. Oh, I know, I hear you, I hear you.
I don't want my wife to find out about this place.
Thanks for the opportunity to...
Put your stuff in storage and don't pay the bill, you'll get rid of it then.
That's a good way to get rid of everything.
No, that'd be the cheapest way to get rid of anything, wouldn't it? No more dumpsters.
Well, I don't think anybody wants an eviction, they, that's a really difficult road for, and I'm sure at this point, these people are just, you know, it's a tough spot to be in.
Right.
So are we comfortable closing the public hearing now?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Jamie, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Let's take it up.
Let's take it up.
Do we, my, my question is, do we need to approve something that's, do we all agree or disagree that it is authorized by the interpretation of the bylaw?
Well, don't we have to decide what... I think that's our job, is to decide whether this is effectual, or whether we can overturn the decision of the building inspector, who has held that this is what it says in every application that doesn't come into, doesn't fit in the same box.
Oh, that's right, it's an administrative appeal.
It's administrative appeal, so the board needs to vote on whether you want to uphold the building commissioner's letter or overturn it.
I missed...
To allow the use.
I'm used to issuing special permits, I apologize.
The, the motion in the positive would be to uphold or to overturn, because that's what they're asking us to do?
They're requesting you to overturn it.
So in the positive would be that we overturn it?
If voted in favor of it, we would overturn the letter of the building inspector.
Because we're in favor of their petition.
Correct. Sounds an awful lot like a motion, Jamie.
I will make a motion, let me just make sure I get the right address here.
Can you bring it up on the screen for me?
I mean, honestly, this is the, the job of the board, is to say, does this fit the way it's intended, and Jose's hands are somewhat tied, because he has to say specifically, this is what I see, and our job is to say, in this case, it is or isn't applicable. That's, that's what we're here for.
Mr. Chairman, before you...
We have five brains.
Wait, who's next, Jose has something?
Six.
Seven?
Mr. Chairman, before you make the decision, I just want the applicant to know, should you, should the board approve the auctioneer business, they will have to, other than the business certificate that they want me to sign, they have to apply for a change of use, maintain use with the building department.
Okay. Not the zoning change of use, just business use?
Change of use, maintain use based on the existing building code, any existing best building or business that go through a change from one use to the other has to conform to the code, as the most current code, which is the 2021 building code of the state of Massachusetts.
What are we changing from to?
What are we changing to? His primary business is storage.
Either way, that's why it's called maintain use, change of use, it's all about safety protocols.
Oh, so it can be maintain or change of use?
Yeah.
Okay, so it could be taken as a maintaining, the, the standard use, which, I don't know why we have to say we're doing what we were doing before, but...
I say that just, just to make it, just to, so that the applicant understands that they don't get surprised when we hand them the application to file for a change of use, maintain use.
But he's not changing use?
But it's also maintain use.
Okay.
It's cha, change of use slash maintain use.
Thank you, Steve.
So that second half is, I'm doing what I was doing.
Still will reapply to the building department, maintain the use.
Is that Clarice Mudd, I guess?
But it is a maintain, right? You're not, you're not saying he's changing.
He's saying he's changing.
Well, as long as Mr. Halladina understands what he's asking, then...
That's the name of the form, it's just whether or not the...
Well, he needs a building certificate to sign off on, and then second, maintain the use of the warehouse.
Yeah, I think we'll put that together, so...
And then proceed with, proceed with his applying for the auctioneer certificate as he was with the, with the...
That goes with the...
Yeah, yeah, footsledding, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What it takes to start a business.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I will make a motion as soon as my...
1654.
I make a motion to approve 6163 Middlesex Street for the administrative appeal under zoning by law section 195102, for the inability to conduct, to up, overturn the adminis, to appeal the bu, building commissioner's determination of, the ability, denial to conduct auctions on the premises.
So...
Does the board wanna add in that it's an accessory use to the warehousing?
As it is deemed an accessory, we find, we deem it as an accessory use, or that based on, do we wanna go...
Maintained use, even.
Yeah, a maintained use, accessory use, auxiliary use, accessory, auxiliary use to warehousing, right? Auxiliary use to warehousing.
Okay, so there were a lot of words said, I just wanna make sure I understand.
We're approving...
We're overturning the, the, if, a vote, a vote in the positive is to overturn the building...
Commissioner's decision to deny auctioning at the site.[1696.82]